All right. Almost there. Have you got pretty much everybody in Cindy?
Yes, everybody's in. We have one, two, three, four, and five. We have everybody that's going to be here is on.
Okay, great. Applicant public is out there somewhere.
We have two applicants on. And we have some phone calls on. And I have no one in the waiting room.
Well, we must be seconds away because my phone just said seven. So, so I guess at that point, I would like to call this meeting, a meeting to order for the December ninth, two thousand twenty-one zoning board meeting of appeals. And to start the meeting off Cindy, I guess we will go for a call, roll call forum for you.
Thank you. Just a couple of reminders because it's a Zoom meeting. We do have to do all our votes by roll call. And you have to state your name and where you're located, like Sagatuck, Allegan County, Michigan. And then we'll move on with the meeting. Kubashak.
Here Sagatuck, Michigan.
Hunt Riser.
Here Sagatuck, Michigan.
Mear. Jim Mear, can you hear us? I'll go back to him. Oak.
Here Sagatuck, Michigan, Allegan County.
And McPollan.
Here Sagatuck, Michigan.
And I'll try Jim one more time. You're muted Jim, but if you could state your name and where you are. I can see his lips moving, so I'll take that as a yes.
Jim, you guys are muting on.
Bot and Zerfus are both excused with prior commitments.
Okay. Thank you Cindy. Second item on our agenda tonight is any changes that might be to our proposed written agenda. If anyone, does anyone have anything we would like to make changes or additions, corrections to the current evening's agenda?
I do not. How does the agenda be approved as noted?
Second that. We have a first and a second, and we need a roll call on that, correct?
Correct. Um, Balk.
Yes.
Mear.
Yes.
Um, McPollan.
Yes.
Kubashak.
Yes.
And I'm missing somebody. Jim Hunt Riser.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, thank you. Item number three, approval of minutes from the August twelfth, two thousand twenty-one meeting. A little while here, so it appears that we had currently tonight, aside myself, would be Jim Balk, Jim Hunt Riser, Jim Mear. I guess the four of us would be the ones that would have any input or any changes to that agenda. And does anybody have any corrections or or notes to make on the proposed minutes from that meeting?
Yes, sir, I do.
Cindy, Jim Balk.
At least I don't know everybody else, but on my other screen, I'm looking at your screen, which is the public hearing procedure. Am I looking at your screener? Yeah, it says I'm viewing Cindy's screen. Would you please scroll down to the public comments section? My concern is that Jane's comments are not not really clear. Yes, she was she was happy that that there are citizens who care about the ordinances and safety, but I would like to clarify her comment. Her comment was that because of the wall, the electrical meters and the screening associated with the electrical meters immediately adjacent to the chain ferry landing, there's a visual barrier between the people exiting the chain ferry and the traffic. And she had seen near miss accidents there where children ran into the street where they couldn't see what was coming, nor could the drivers see them. But I think that statement needs to be clarified a little bit since this is a part of the official record and there is a lawsuit concerning this meeting.
Oh, Jim, I guess you're you would like to, I do recall, you know, those are her words, I guess, her her statement that that the witnessing of of children and the danger, is that something you would like to add to these minutes to make sure that that's included?
Yes, and the cause of the danger, which is the wall, the electrical meters and the screening, those were her points. Those create an absolute visual barrier between pedestrians and drivers. So what I might suggest, Cindy, you tell me if this is okay or not, is we approve the minutes as amended and the amendment would be that the city clerk would go back and get Jane's comments off of the tape.
Unfortunately, I tried to do that this afternoon and there the meeting was not recorded. I don't know if it was a technical failure or
That's interesting.
But it was not recorded.
Well, how about this? If we say a child could get hit by a car because of the visual barrier presented by the wall, the electrical meters and the screening immediately adjacent to the car ferry. And then period, the crowded tourist season will continue and this problem will continue.
So is that something that probably hopefully Cindy, you could pull off of these minutes and add to them?
Yes.
So with that amendment, I would I would move that these meeting minutes be approved as amended.
I would support. Okay, Jim Mear supports that.
Thank you, Jim, for making that correction. This is Jane. I noticed it in the minutes.
You're welcome, Jane. Welcome to the meeting.
Okay. All right. Well, all right. Thank you. So we have a first and a second. So then for the are any other, any other changes amendments to these minutes that anyone else wants to bring up? Okay, then Cindy, with with that motion and second, can we have a roll call?
Yes, I have Kubashak.
Yes.
Jim Mear.
Yes.
Jim Balk.
Yes.
And Jim Hunt Riser.
Yes.
Three Jims and a Bob. So we're good.
All right. Okay. So that takes us down to our item number four, which is new business.
I think we have comments first.
Not on my agenda, but mine says item number three, new minutes for new business.
Okay, there will be opportunity during the public hearings for the public speak, so we'll go right on to new business.
Okay, that's item number seven. So we do have that down there. Okay, so so we have item A, which is nine ninety-four Holland Street setback for a shed and a converted patio, public hearing. So that is item number eight, and that is before us. So to open up that hearing at this point in time, I would like to ask ask Cindy for a summary, our zoning administrator of the application for everyone.
Thank you. In this case, the applicant proposes to build a twelve by eight storage shed and a twelve by eight covered patio, three feet from the south property line, or seven feet is required. I did calculate the rest of the requirements. The only exception they're asking for is the side yard setback. Everything else is either existing and meeting the code. I did make some comments, but a picture shows a thousand words. So we'll look at the survey and the plan that applicants submitted. This is the survey of the property. Holland Street is here towards the top, river is towards the bottom. And the proposed shed and patio will be in this blackened area, right? Wish I had a better pointer. Three feet from the property line, the neighbor at that property line has does have a fence that can go right up to the property line. And our ordinance allows for that, but structure, other structures other than fences do have to be set back seven feet and they're proposing three. That's the location. And then there's a kind of a little layout of what the floor plan will look like. So there you have it. I'll let the applicant do the rest.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gray.
I'm Chris.
And I'm here with my husband, Chris. First and foremost, we appreciate your time to consider this, and we have been actually just thrilled to death about owning this beautiful property and bringing it back to life. I'm sure if you drive down Holland Street, you've noticed that there's been a lot of activity here. And I know Dale Mennerick put a lot of love and passion into this property, and we certainly want to bring that back. So unfortunately, when we were evaluating the backyard, which was in deplorable shape, there was a dilapidated cottage back there that was unsafe to the point that our insurance company wouldn't insure us for a second year unless it was torn down. We thought we would keep some of the decking and we certainly wanted some over some shade for some seating, but we discovered, our landscaper discovered that the decking wasn't necessarily deep enough past the frost line and a lot of it was damaged. So we put a lot of thought and a lot of energy and a lot of money in this backyard and we would really appreciate if we could have this small dispensation given to us.
Okay, and that was Renee, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. And then Chris, did you want to make any comments or?
The only comments that we had a couple of choices as we're trying to position this shed slash covered seating area. And we now have basically three tiers in our backyard now that the majority of the hardscape is done. We have the lower level at the river, which is already have sod on it. There's now a middle section which never existed and there's the upper portion, which is the deck off the back of our house. We now have three tiers. We thought that by positioning the shed on the second tier, close to the fence was the best position for privacy for both us and our neighbor. He already had, they already had a twenty-four foot long fence right there. It would be on the other side. There's also some pines there to help block the view. If we considered other positions that would actually be more visible to them. And so we were mindful of that. And first, and the reason that we're requesting the three foot setback versus the standard seven is we just think that since their fence is pretty much on the property line, by leaving a seven foot gap is just wasting land that could be utilized into our side of the backyard. Since it butts up against their fence, there was no value, we thought, to the neighbors to the left there. So that's why we're requesting the three feet and we wanted to three feet just so that there was still clearance. We could walk through there, get through there versus going right to the property line. So that additional four feet basically gives us four more usable feet on the other side of the shed towards our stairs and our house. So that was the logic going into putting it at this spot right here.
Okay, all right. Well, that makes a little sense. By the way, it's it is beautifully. You guys done a heck of a job back there. It's beautiful. So thank you. Thank you at this point. Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, let's see. Quite often when we when we go through this process, we will enter into our own deliberation and discussion about, you know, questions we may have and come back to you with and but we'll have, we may have some questions for you later on. And therefore, we will probably at this point in time, we'd like to go in and see if there's any other written comments or public comments. So I know Cindy, we had, I believe, two written correspondents. Is that what I?
We have a total of three. And did you want to open the public hearing at this point?
Uh, yeah, let's go ahead and
No, sorry.
Open, open the the public comments on on the application at this point in time. And we can have, I guess, phone comments and then we can go back and read anything we need to read as far as written. So I'll let you handle the who's ever anyone wants. There's anyone that'd like to make a public comment at this time, may do so.
This is Phil Miller and with my wife, Susie Richardson. We're at nine six six Holland. We border the property that Renee and Chris just spoke about. We're the ones with the fence on the other side. And I have dropped off a letter. We object to giving them this dispensation. We're we're very concerned about noise. We're very concerned about light. There was a brief mention once in a conversation with Chris Renee about a storage unit, but to us, the covered area, the electricity, the additional patio beyond the covered patio is going to create noise and light bleed that's close to our bedroom and living room area. And, you know, we appreciate what they're doing, but in this case, we think it's taken away from our enjoyment about quiet and light. And so therefore, we object to it and feel that they have no specific need. They have plenty of entertainment area on the deck, on the three tiers they've talked about. So there's not any kind of a hardship. It's simply a desire to use every square foot and we simply like open area. And the fence is not exactly on the property line. We put that up back two owners ago with Metternich for the gazebo. But at this point, we we could make additional comments, but we think the letter speaks for itself that we dropped off.
Okay, well, thanks, Phil. We'll go ahead and read that also just to put it into the records. Do we have anyone else that would like to make a comment?
Missed your hand.
Yes, hi, I'm Sandy Weintraub. I'm a neighbor of Phil's on the other side. And I have also submitted a letter. We're very concerned about the character of the neighborhood, about changing things that are going to be light pollution, noise pollution, traffic. We've already experienced that on one side of our property, and I know we're not abutting this property, but it's a big concern. Also, it's my understanding that a variance, granting a variance is done in cases where there is sheer constraint on the use of the property by the owners. So I am thinking that that would not fulfill those requirements.
Okay. Thank you, Sandy, for your information. And you will you also have submitted a letter, so.
Yes, I have. Yes.
Yes. Cindy, is Jim Hunt Riser? Is it, are we getting background from Jim or? It does show up. You show up as if maybe it's coming from there, but I'm not sure. So but I was thinking it was Jim Mear. Maybe I said Hunt Riser. I think somebody, I think it was Jim Mear actually. What are you hearing? I don't know. I do get, I don't know if anybody else is hearing the background noise, but your your picture shows up as if you're speaking.
Well, now he's muted, so we should be good.
Okay.
Bob, you're muted too. Bob, we can't hear you.
Got it. Got it. I got it. All right. You're back. I'm back. Anyone else that would like to speak then? No one else on the phone that would like to speak, right?
I'm not seeing any hands raised.
Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna because of a little bit of I'm gonna ask maybe Cindy, if you could read the letters, if you have, do you have them handy?
I do.
I have. And one, one email that you sent separate from the other, but then the, so if you wouldn't mind, so that they're they're read properly and and I'm done.
I'll read them in the order that they were received. This was from from Dan Fox. I doubt I'll be able to make the subject meeting, but wanted to provide my feedback on the request variance. Current owners of nine ninety-four Holland Street property have already dramatically upgraded both the home and the surrounded landscaping. This large unique home was once among the very finest in the city. All the work the new stores have commissioned so far has in dramatic fashion returned to properties to its former beauty, in many cases exceeding and improving on it. They have been respectful of the natural environment and character of the architecture. They have been respectful and accommodating to their neighbors. I have no reason to believe that the relatively minor variance being sought now will be in any way harmful, inconvenient, or otherwise a problem. That's from Dan Fox. And we got one from Melissa Smith at Cent thirty-five Holland. I object to the setback variance at nine ninety-four Holland. I believe all homes should comply with existing city rules which allow privacy between properties. I do not think we should change rules one by one as this sets dangerous overcrowding precedence. And then we got one email from Sandy. We are writing to you as the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals out of our great concerns with Sagatuck property owners at nine ninety-four.
Cindy, we can't see it. We can't see that letter.
Can't see that one because it's not a letter. It was an email.
Oh, I'm very sorry.
That's not a problem. I can read it though.
Yeah, thank you.
We have carefully reviewed the proposal and associated illustrations and have grave concerns about the impact of the project on our privacy, our right to enjoy our property without light and noise pollution and our neighborhood in general. We have owned our property since two thousand and four and have seen many changes since then that we have contributed to increased traffic, noise and light pollution in this residential area. We just learned about the proposals to the zoning board of appeals by the owners of nine ninety-four requesting variance for planned construction and about meeting of the board scheduled for tomorrow. We have several questions and concerns related to this issue. I'm going to skip number one because I think we've resolved that one. We understand that a variance can be granted when without it, owner's use of the property would be constrained. The parcel's land at nine ninety-four Holland is close to an acre in size and a setback of seven feet is being requested to be reduced to three. Surely there must be an additional four feet within the appropriate setback lines that could serve their purpose without a variance. And number three, we have already experienced disruption to our neighborhood in the form of light and noise pollution. The old parked house has been turned into a vacation rental where outdoors is lighted twenty-four seven with lights that we can't shut out from filtering through our closed curtains, not to mention that we haven't seen stars in two years. We believe we live in a residential area, but it seems the rules are being bent and not sure that all the negatives have been appropriately weighed or the proper buy-in from a butters has been obtained. We are not sure what is within our legal rights. Property owners should pay very hefty taxes as out of state residents equally enjoy life in this wonderful town on the Kalamazoo River. We hope that the zoning board will listen to all the people on both sides and consider the sure to be great impact of this project on the nature of our neighborhood, especially once doors are open to entitlements that not only are unfair, but that cause a harm to others in the way of noise and light pollution. Wanting to maintain Sagatuck as the special place it has always been sincerely Sandy Weintraub and Marshall Buasalum. Unfamiliar name to me. So that.
The proper pronunciation is Mesulum. It's a mouthful, yeah, but pronounceable nonetheless.
And then we already went over Phil Miller's objections, but I will read it into the record. We are writing regarding the variance request by nine ninety-four Holland Street to reduce the setback from our property at nine sixty-six Holland Street from seven feet to three feet. We believe that this request should be denied. The size of the eight by twelve structure in addition to an eight by twelve foot covered entertainment patio, total area eight by twenty-four, will create additional activities such as light bleed, noise, sightline issues with our bedroom and living room that faces the boundary line. The properties need the setback buffer to mitigate that activity and not interfere with the enjoyment of our property. The applicants have dramatically altered the riverfront side of their property and increased their current entertaining area recently with an expansive deck and hard tiered landscaping. So the property has significant entertaining areas and so is no need for a variance. We have lived at nine sixty-six and also own eight ninety-eight Holland Street for thirty-eight years and are the most impacted neighbors since the described property lies thirty feet from our bedroom. We wish to preserve some of the character that has made the riverfront attractive by maintaining some open space and natural surroundings for quiet enjoyment of our property. We also believe that this could negatively impact the value of our property. We therefore respectfully request, ask the zoning board of appeals to deny this variance request. Thank you for your consideration, Susie Richardson and Phil Miller.
Okay. All right. So that concludes, from what I understand, our written comments, our phone in Zoom comments, public comments. I do have to ask one more time to make sure that there are no other written, no other public comments before we close and go into go into closed sessions, close the open meeting part.
Yes, I have another one more comment. I think in my letter, I didn't specifically state that I request that the variance be denied. And so I am making that comment now.
Okay. So noted. All right. So at that point in time, I'd like to close the the public portion of comments and allow the board to go into its own private deliberation and discussions. And again, if we do have any kind of questions for the applicant, we'll come back and do so. So board members at this time, I like to open it up for discussion. I am, I I do want to, I'll put a couple of questions in first here, and this is going to be either for Chris, Chris or Renee. I have a question. Is the, is there an overall height that is proposed or maybe Cindy knows this of the structure of the shed?
No, we would just make it whatever a normal height of a shed would be. We're not interested in.
Interested in building it whatever shed height, normal height is probably a.
I don't know what it is. But I what I did tell Phil in an email is that it would be at or below the height of his outbuilding next door. I don't know what a standard height is. We haven't gone to that detail. We're just trying to get, what we were trying to do this fall was at least just get the foundation. Of the eight-by-twelve area poured and then the spring revisit and design the shed. We have some rough ideas. But we don't, a standard height of a shed, I don't know what one is.
Okay, that, I think that explains my question as far as whether it's a, let's say, extended height or two-story or something like that. Okay, and then I, the way you just described it, it was on a, it's on a concrete pad. So it's not a shed on skids or something that's brought in some kind of a pre-made thing per se. Yeah, so utility-wise, probably just just power, something like that, maybe water or.
Irrigation might be ran from it, so it might have water to run irrigation to our backyard because there was no irrigation back there. So the the box or the controller might be in there and there might be water that were hit. We are not gonna have a running sink. It is not, it's not gonna be a bar. It is primarily a shed for storage of lawnmower, paddle boards, deck furniture in the winter. And then the cupboard awning is just attached to it. For seating if we want to get out of the sun or you're out there and it starts raining. So we expect that that middle tier would be used for lawn games like cornhole and things like that.
Oh, may maybe I understand. Let's, if I get my direction right to the west, that would be the the roof would extend over. Like an open area from the shed.
Yeah.
Is that the way I understand your drawing?
Yeah, yeah, that's correct.
Like a covered, covered area over there, okay. And that include, that includes, I guess that, does that part include the eighteen, the twelve by eight or the size here I wrote it down?
Each are twelve by eighteen, so there's one twelve by eighteen attached to the twelve by eighteen awning. I mean, I'm sorry, twelve by eight, not twelve by eight.
So the roof is twenty-four by sixteen.
The roof line.
Okay, the roof line's twenty, okay.
Yeah, would be open for a covered patio.
Okay. Okay, that makes, all right, that's what I, those are some questions I was trying to make out of your sketch. There wasn't actual, you know. Details as far as some of those dimensions. There were some dimensions, but I want to make sure we understood some others like heights and stuff.
Wait, I I have a question on that, Bob.
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
I see the the twenty-four part that the applicants referenced, which would be the twelve feet of the building and the twelve feet of the patio. But they said twelve or twenty-four by sixteen. To me, it looks like it would be twenty-four by eight.
I'm sorry, what was that, Jim?
Yes, that's correct. It is twenty-four by eight. That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else that has any questions or any, like to ask any questions or ask, have any input on their feelings on what we've been able to? Review with some of the comments and proposed information tonight?
I have a couple, Bob.
All right, Jim.
This is Jim Muir. First of all, the covered patio. Is that necessary to the use of the shed or is it gonna be auxiliary to the use of the shed? You indicated that it may be a soft cover as a current, as opposed to a permanent cover?
No, it would be the same roof line. The roof line would go twenty-four feet. And twelve of that roof line would be just open. And that's where the seating would be. So we're just utilizing that roof line.
In all sense, this is replacing to some degree the gazebo that used to be there and was in disrepair. And so we had to pull it out. So we, there was a gazebo at that mid-tier point at one point that we had to tear down. And we would like to still have a mid-tier covering there of some kind. So it's kind of taking the place of a gazebo that was once there. But it wasn't three feet off the line. It was a little further into our property, though.
So are you intending then to run electricity out to the patio as well as to the shed?
Yes.
Okay, and would would that be used for daily activity, daily evening activities? Over overflow?
For my kids to charge their cell phones, I'm sure.
But it could, it's most often gonna be used during the day. It's gonna be for outside yard games is what it would be. And also, we are gonna have a pontoon boat. So what we could see is storing needed stuff for our boat. In this shed area. And after coming back from the boat, we could see coming to play lawn games and we'd want to have seating out in this area. And this is where we selected to put seating. What we would often probably do is that table and chairs that's shown. Kind of underneath the awning section would be pulled out into the sunny section going towards our stairs. That that is movable seating. That could be either in the sun, on an open patio, or slid back under. If we needed some sudden shade or it started raining.
But we would certainly need electricity in the shed as we're needing something in the shed. We wouldn't. And it's dark out, you need electricity.
And and there would be lights. I mean, it's that there, we would be sensitive to how bright the light, but there would have to be light there, yes.
Lights where? In the patio or in the shed?
In the shed. And I mean, we would want a, some type of lighting. In the patio.
Okay. Have you considered any other location for this shed? Or is this the best possible solution in your mind?
The heart is all done. We believe that this is the best possible solution in conjunction with. It does. It's close to the fence. So we thought that that made sense. If we pushed it somewhere out, that it would have more visibility than.
The only spot it would really go if it were to here would be on the lowest tier and that would be very visible. And that would not be a preferred location for us on our lower tier. If we left it where it is, but we were allowed or we were not allowed more, less or less than a seven feet. We would have to redesign the layout of this because if we had the seven feet gap, the entrance to the shed. Is gonna push too far into our very steep declining hill, which is at least at a forty-five degree angle right there. And we'd have to reposition and redesign the layout of this. It could be done with the seven-foot variance. And it will still likely be in that location, but this layout with this design works best. We had to relay it out another way. In the end, the shed is probably still gonna be in this vicinity. It would just be seven feet instead of three feet.
And and just out of curiosity, curiosity, do we need a variance to put electricity in an outbuilding?
Not to my knowledge. Do you, Cindy?
No, there's no variance required to have electricity there.
Okay, Jim Muir, do you have any other questions for them?
Not at this time, thanks.
Okay. Just kind of run around the block here a little bit. Jim Bauch, you have any questions for applicants or any any input in general for the board members?
No questions. And I want to compliment the applicants for the beautiful job that they're doing restoring this home and making a beautiful place out of it. The hardscape that they mentioned that they put in. Makes that area very usable and very nice. Unfortunately, the way it is, if the hardscape presents a problem. For this building or for access to this building or this patio, that certainly makes it a self-created issue. And that's, that's a part of the problem that we're we're debating with here. And the the other thing is, is that the law, which in this case is the State of Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. Does not allow us to give a variance unless there is a clear practical difficulty. And practical difficulty, the the definition of that, I'm reading from the zoning code, is. A situation whereby a property owner can establish a minimum practical legal legal use. For the lot or parcel, meeting all the dimensional standards of the zoning district which the lot is located. Situations occurring due to the owner's desire to establish a greater use than the minimum practical standard. Or to enhance economic gain greater than associated with a minimum practical standard. Or created by an owner subsequent to the adoption date of this chapter is not a practical difficulty. So my concern is that we don't have demonstration of a clear practical difficulty here. Just a minute, Cindy. And if we were to issue a variance, that variance would run with this property forever. And there's nothing to say that the next owner wouldn't want to put a guest home down there three feet from the property line. So that's, that's my thoughts on it.
Jim, I want to mention that you are quoting the standard for a use variance. And this is a dimensional variance, so the the. The standard is not practical difficulty. It is unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property. For a permitted purpose or render conformity unnecessarily burdensome. So practical difficulty is for a use variance, and this is a dimensional variance.
Thank you, thank you, Cindy. So we we still haven't demonstrated. An excessive burden here. It it could be built in conformance and without an excessive burden. So that's, that's kind of where we're at here.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Kate, you have any input or any?
I agree. I agree with everything Jim just said. I appreciate their preference to build right up to the fence. It does seem like wasted space, but I think we could drive around town and see any number of examples where that's the case. And that's, that's how ordinance reads, but I I don't see how we can approve a variance. Given our standards.
Okay. How about Jim Hunter Riser?
Yeah, I do. I think it looks great, but I too can't figure out any reason why we would approve this given. That there are alternate uses that are within the permitted and zoned ordinance.
Okay. Let's say Chris or Renee, whichever one wants to answer. My question is, you know, the one picture that Cindy or you. Used in your application would show the excavating going on. When is it that you realize that you may need a variance for this shed?
Our landscaper brought it to our attention when we were talking about, we had always wanted a shed. And he went and got the zoning from Cindy. And so we wanted to make sure that we were not impeding on anything improperly.
But in terms of where to position it, we really didn't know until, because some of this, what you can have a plan of what your backyard is gonna look like. When you're bringing all these massive retaining blocks in and building these different levels. We really weren't sure once trees were cleared out. And the ground was groomed and the walls went in to know exactly where it was gonna be placed. So it really wasn't until the the walls were in place. We kind of thought it would go there, but we weren't sure until we finally got to the point we are now. Where it looked like it would fit well at that spot.
Okay, all right. Thanks. That was ju-just just a little, my, you know, question as to. Whether there was some kind of a difficulty there or some kind of a burden some that came along. But I I can understand how things evolve and things have got to become clearer as you, as you go through this kind of a clearing and process. Well, I, what I'd like to do is then, based on, unless any of the board members have any other. Other concerns or questions, I would like for us to go through and review the standards that we're. We're bound to to review and make sure that we understand. And and do some, you know, little clarity there, make sure that we're comfortable with the standards as some of the. Comments that have been made is in regards to how we foresee this, this variance being looked at. So let's start with Jim Hunter Riser. Are you available to read maybe the first standard for us?
That strict compliance with area setbacks, frontage, height, bulk, or density would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for permitted purses. Or would render conformity unnecessarily burdensome. I think while we all see some value in the additional space that is, would be allowed by the new structure. It does not necessarily allow for the, you can still use property without making that change.
Okay, any other members have any comments on the first standard? Or? Then let's just ask Jim Muir, maybe on the second one?
Sure. That a variance would be do substantial justice to the owner as well as to other property owners in the district. Or whether a lesser relaxation would give substantial relief and be more consistent with justice to others. It would allow the owner to utilize more of the yard while minimizing the impact on the neighbor's view of the river. But as has been witnessed from some of the letters that we've received, I think there are some concerns. With regard to the neighborhood owners in the district. And I think we have to consider that a little bit also. I I'm not sure that they've done enough work at moving that. Shed without requesting a variance. So I'd like to see some more work with that.
Okay. Anyone else on number two? Any input? And then let's have Jim Bauch on number three.
That the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances of the property and not general neighborhood conditions. I would say in that case, it's true. There is, there are topography issues there. They've done a lot of landscaping. And there are other homes in the neighborhood with those same conditions. But the, this property is unique in that it's set so far back from the river and the slope down to the river is so severe. So in that case, I would say that condition is met.
There are some, there are some things that could meet it in that condition. And then. Anyone else other than Jim Bauch on that?
I would just say that there is interesting topography there, but I think the applicant has already stated that they could in fact build what they want to build. Seven feet from the property line, or I imagine they could, you know, modify their design a little bit.
That's true.
Okay, yeah. How about the last one, number four, Kate? Would you like to go through that one?
Sure, that the problem is not self-created or based on personal financial circumstances. I assume the latter is not the case. I don't think there are any personal financial circumstances at play here that I am aware of, but. I guess I, maybe you all can educate me a little bit more about what the beginning of that statement means. Problem is not self-created. I would imagine it, in this case, it probably is.
And this one is always a little bit of a. A challenging question and and it, as you know, all these standards have their focus on different issues. And sometimes this one is pretty clear, sometimes it's not. Your so far interpretation to my, in my, my view is is pretty accurate, you know, that. This doesn't seem to be a situation where. Someone has to, we we run into times as far as, you know, a financial circumstance where there's some, something that creates. A heck of a financial thing that, you know, they didn't create it. It was, it was just inherit. Or inherited with the circumstance with the property. And then self-created, of course, is pretty explanatory. Because a similar thing, but when you, when you. A similar thing, but when you, when you have a choice, a lot of times self-created doesn't play too far into it. So it'd be my opinion of this one that it, you know, does not meet that standard. That it's pretty clear that it's, that it is self-created. This could, this could be altered. There are options for it and and but it is also not on personal circumstances, but it. It is, it is, the problem is, you know, more self-created. If anybody has any other input on number four, that would be. The way I see it, I think the way Kate answered it. You know, in a general rule, just as a reminder, what we. Our charter is that, you know, we have to. We look at these standards and we need to go to a vote and and motions that. States that these standards, all these man standards are met in order to approve a variance. In general, my, my feel is, as the, I guess chairman here is that there are three of these. Three of these standards from our discussion review here was that the three of them did not. One of them had a little bit of a yes and a no. Depending upon maybe on number three, which way you look at it. Do any of the board members have any other? Overall feelings differently than my take? Okay, okay. At that point, I would like to then ask anyone of the board if they would like to make a motion. Regarding our findings of facts and our discussions here that. That would, you know, give us some kind of resolution to the request.
I'll do it.
Okay, Jim Bauch?
I move. That based upon an analysis of the four standards required to issue a variance. That. We deny the variance for nine ninety-four Holland Street for a twelve by eight foot shed and a twelve by eight foot covered patio. Three feet from the side property line or seven feet is required. That would result in a variance of four feet as submitted. The staff report is attached as a part of the record and the following findings affect are adopted. And at that point, we would include the statements from our deliberations.
From the recording, right?
Yes.
Okay, I think that pretty well covers the dimensional issues and the. Property description. Does anyone have any questions? Before we, I ask for a second. Would anyone like to second Jim Bauch's? Motion?
I support second.
Jim Muir supports Jim Bauch's. Again, any discussions before we would move on to a vote? Okay, Cindy. We need to go to your, to your vote. Roll call vote for this.
Yep, Bauch?
Yes.
Muir?
Yes.
Hunterizer?
Yes.
McCallan?
Yes.
And Kubatsiak?
I would be yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so the request. For nine ninety-four for for a variance setback has has been denied by the zoning board of appeals. And at that point, that point, I would like to move our meeting along to item number B under new business. Now, remember, there is, there is public comment. That after, after our next couple items on the agenda, if you don't mind, so.
Oh, certainly. Thank you.
That's all right. Uh huh. So item B is the two thousand twenty-two meeting schedule. That is in front of us, Cindy has brought up. And. I believe if. If the homework is properly done, these are the Thursdays, correct? If that's right, once a month?
Those are the second Thursday of every month.
Second Thursday of every month, yes. And. Would someone like to approve the proposed? Board meeting dates for two thousand twenty-two?
So moved.
Okay, McCallan, Kate McCallan moves and Jim Muir seconds. And we have to do a roll call or a vote, roll call vote for. Because we're on Zoom, so right, Cindy?
Correct. McCallan?
Yes.
Muir?
Yes.
Bauch?
Yes.
Hunterizer?
Yes.
And Kubatsiak?
Yes.
Motion carries. They are adopted.
Okay, and then number, item number five is any unfinished business? Anyone aware of any unfinished business at this point in time? I don't think or is. Unless Cindy has something, okay?
Oh, I'm good.
All right, and then item number six. Any other communications to be shared? Either by the board or or by our administrator? Nothing there? So we'll move on to item number seven, which is public comment. At this time, if anyone would like to make any public comment. This is, can be any anything regarded to either tonight's. Applications or anything else that you want to make public comment. We we do restrict you to three minutes. Please state your name and address if you would like to do that, that would be nice. So anybody would like to speak right now?
I would like, my name is Sandy Weintraub and I'm at eight nine four Holland Street. And I want to really commend the zoning board for. I I don't, I don't usually get involved in these kinds of things, so. And I don't know how these governmental things in local places work, but I think I I'm just really. Very pleased that things are being considered from all points of view and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Jane Underwood, one thirty Perryman Street. When I read the minutes. And my comments supposedly in the minutes, I thought, hmm, I usually say more than that. And I want to thank Jim for. Adding more of my thoughts because I know I usually say them. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
Renee Drake, nine nine four Holland. I just wanted to. I wanted to thank everyone. We certainly have utmost respect for what you do and we certainly understand. And we appreciate your time and consideration for this. So we really want to thank you. We're going to be a part of this community for a long time. I do just want to clarify, though. The shed and the patio can still be built. It just has to be with a seven foot setback. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And.
Side yard, side yard and meet your and meet your rear yard also, but you'll be okay on your rear yard.
Twenty-five, right. And we will certainly be respectful to the light and noise. And making sure that we are a welcome part of this community. So thank you very much.
Thank you for all the information. It was very well presented and and nice job on the property, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else has anything? They would like to put out there?
There is one hand raised by the telephone.
I think that might be Princess Renee, Cindy.
Yeah. Six and we did star nine, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe that's all for public comments. Any final ZBA comments before we adjourn?
祝 everyone a happy holiday.
Very good comment, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody for for your participation tonight and your diligence of looking into these issues. And taking time to to research it, so. There's nothing else, then we'll adjourn and. Hopefully, see you guys around town.
We have to have a motion and a vote.
Oh, shoot.
Sorry.
Second.
Formalities. All right, ready for vote, Cindy?
Hunterizer?
Yes.
McCallan, yes. Bauch?
Yes.
Muir?
Yes.
And Kubatsiak?
I guess so. If we can't be at the sandbar after this, I guess I'll say yes.
Okay, most, meeting adjourned.
All right, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Good night.
Good night. Kate?